First just, Justin, will you lead us in our invocation?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we just thank you for all that you provide. But we thank you for the weather and the change in weather, just to remind us, Lord, that we are not in control. God, we ask that you would just be with the people today making decisions. We ask for wisdom and we ask that all things would glorify you. We love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Samantha, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting. The order, start with the roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindeberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deanna McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Jimmy Conda.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item is the adoption of the agenda, and we do need to amend that to add a couple items of new business. One is to authorize the mayor to enter a contract with Denali Water Solutions for biosolids removal at the sewer plant. I would like to add that to number three under new business. And I would like to add to number four, a change order with Boyle's Construction. We have any thoughts or motions on that?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the changes.
Okay, second?
Here you go.
I have a motion second to approve the agenda with the amendments mentioned.
Yes.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our February 8th meeting. Do we have any comments on those?
I think they are awesomely done.
Okay.
I love it. Love it. Don't y'all?
Yes.
I love the A, B, C, D.
We can talk about it when you make a motion.
Okay, I made the motion that we approve the February 8th meeting minutes.
I second.
We have a motion second to approve the awesome minutes from February 8th. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. All right, next is our public forum where we'll allow anyone from the public to address the council with concerns. We do ask that you try to allow your com- or keep your comments to two minutes each. Is there anyone who would like to address the council tonight? No? All right, we close the public forum. So before we move into business reports, we have two. I'm not going to call you guys politicians because I have more respect for you than that. But we have two citizens running for office in our area. They've both reached out to me and asked if they could come introduce themselves to the council tonight. So I told them I would put them on after the public forum, let them do an introduction, and then if you guys have any questions for them, feel free. So first is Kendra Moore, and you are running for state representative.
Yes, sir.
Of, I can't remember the district.
District 23.
23.
Yes.
Go ahead, come on up.
All right, well, good evening, and I appreciate the time to introduce myself. I live over in Lincoln. That's where I've grown up. I've been on the school board over there for the past 11 years. My kiddos go to school over there and just really enjoy serving. I'm excited about this opportunity, and I love small towns. A group in Lincoln played basketball many, many times over here at West Fork at the Dome, and so we appreciate everything that you all do here and what I just really hope that I get the opportunity to support another great small town like West Fork. So thank you.
Any questions for Kendra? So you were telling me District 23 is a newly created district, correct?
Yes, so based on the census. It's redrawn the lines according to the population. So basically, it goes from the Benton County line south to about Dutch Mills, if you're familiar with kind of that area, and then on east. So Lincoln, Prairie Grove, West Fork, and Greenland.
Okay. So Kendra, if no one else will speak up about it, I've asked our council to reach out to our state representatives that we currently have. We need a new bridge across the river.
All right.
So we wish you luck, and when you get there, West Fork needs a new bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we also have Tom Terminella, who is running for Washington County judge. Come on up, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me this platform. And I met Heath about six or eight months ago, and he's, you're lucky to have him, okay? He's, I've been here 52, my 56 years soon to be. And if you recall the meeting, I came to West Fork. Me and my wife last year put a piece of property in escrow and we planned to close on it this summer. And I called Heath. I didn't know him. I've never met him. And I called down and said, hey, do you have time to meet with me? I'm thinking about coming to West Fork. He said, absolutely. How about Friday at 1:00? I said, I'm in. So I stuck my head in the door and I said, I've contemplated coming down and refiring up and doing some land planning and some, you know, community building because of this 15-year issue called sewer that finally got resolved for our city of West Fork. And I said, but I don't want to come down here if you don't want me, okay? I already live in a city that doesn't really appreciate growth or need growth because they have the University of Arkansas. All they have to do is turn the light switch on and get 200 million a year. Well, West Fork's a little bit different, you know? It's bedroom community and has great potential. And of course, couldn't really do anything because of our sewer capacity in this part of the world. And of course, that got solved with either your leadership or your oversight. So my hat's off to that. So anyway, I stuck my head in the door. I said, if you don't want me, I'm not coming in the building. He said, man, get in here. I didn't think I'd see somebody like you for 30 years down here. So anyway, I got a warm welcome, and we're working on the project. And I'm here tonight mainly to introduce myself and my bride, my soulmate of 30 years, Monica, my wife. Without her, none of this would even matter. But anyway, I want to be the next judge for Washington County. Really wanted to be the mayor of Fayetteville. I've run twice. I realize that place has morphed into something that I don't remember growing up as a kid, but it is what it is. So I'm going to run, and I filed for Washington County judge last week. And I'm sorry, I'm going to every council that will have me in the county. And we're doing it for the right reason. We, of course, care about the community. But there's so many things that this county is turning into that, you know, that I don't recognize either. The problems are just festering from the lack of pay, the lack of pride, the lack of planning, infrastructure, the road department shortages, the 50 deputies law enforcement at the detention facility, no planning directors, no shop people anymore. It's, you know, growing up, boy, to work for Washington County, be a motor grader operator, you know, that was, you know, be a sheriff, deputy sheriff, work it, you know? That, so anyway, I'm running for Washington County judge. I'm running on a Republican ticket. It's May 24th. I got to win the primary in order to run in the general. And I'm going to do it for a term or two if the citizens vote me in. I got to know if the county likes me any better than my city. I've been here 52 years, like they say. And I'm going to do the best to try to fix these things. And I'm going to go see Jake and Trell in the morning, the two of the facilities, so I can understand it better and see what y'all have to deal with every day. And it's negligence on the behalf of the people that we've hired and elected because it comes down to health, welfare, and safety for us, the citizens, the people of this county, okay? And when they fail us, we have to replace them. We have to get people in there to fix this stuff because we do care. I do care about crime and about what's going on in this county and the lack of action. You know, the lack of support for law enforcement, the lack of the facility, the lack of pay. I mean, Washington County should be the number one county in the state of Arkansas, all 75 counties. Don't tell me we don't have the money. We have the world's wealthiest people living 25 minutes up the road. Anything is possible. So I leave you with that. I have four beautiful kids. They're all over Achievers. I'm one of eight children, the last one, the best looking of all of them. I'm grateful for my wife. I'm grateful for this community. I grew up bird hunting, tillie-willying this whole valley as a kid, quail hunting. And I want you to support me if you can. And I want you to call your friends and neighbors and let them know I came down here. And I want you to know I started in West Fork. West Fork is my number one city, and I'm grateful for you. So with that, I've taken up enough of your time. Thank you. And my cell phone number is 479-841-1621. Please write it down if you need it. That's my contact, 841-1621. My email is tterminella, and that's T-T-E-R-M-I-N-E-L-L-A@AOL.com. I'm a dinosaur.
You are a dinosaur.
And I'm available. I'm here for the citizens, and if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, we're going to take care of the bridge. We're going to take care of Campbell Loop. We're going to take care of Dyke Creek. We're going to have a monthly meeting with all the mayors and all the planning staff, and we're going to help everybody coordinate. You know, that's the key, is be a conduit.
So does anybody have any questions for Tom?
So anyway, with that, if, yeah, I'm open. And I'm just warming up. This is a number one city. I ought to be rolling in about 12 weeks, and I don't know if my wife can tolerate me or not, but I am thankful to Jesus for her. God, what a helper, what a, what a maker. So anyway.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Thank you all for caring, sir.
Yeah.
Said, I'll see you in the morning.
Yes, sir, 9:30, Mr. Ken Trell. Me and, yep. And if I could be of any help, you've got my contact. You've got my number. Please reach out to me. If you can support me, please ask your friends to do the same.
I do have one question. What are you planning on doing here in West Fork?
In West Fork?
Yeah, you said something about that you.
We, before David Clark McClintock passed away and went to heaven, he afforded me the opportunity to own the 20 tracts and the 1,000 acres up on Dyke Creek. We have that in escrow, and I'm currently land planting 300 acres of it for obtainable, high-quality housing with new schools and new sanctuary sites. It's about 300 of the 1,046 acres is what we have under planning. We're currently working on infrastructure, main, water, and sewer main extensions to bring enough capacity. And of course, we'll be annexing or we'll be asking this body to accept us into your city. And I'm excited because it's time, you know? Prairie Grove is the fifth fastest-growing place in the state of Arkansas. I mean, I was out there in Lincoln this weekend. It's just, it's amazing. You either grow or you die, you know? And this is a, this resource, this river, this valley, it's magical. But, you know, I grew up here, and I'm also big in alternative transportation and working with the trails and, you know, we're just stewards of this stuff. We don't take it to heaven, you know? So you try to, like your planner was saying back there, you know, leave it in a better spot than you found it. But I have an aspiration of creating a greenway from basically the University of Devil's Den, and it comes through West Fork, you know? It's just, it's there. And it takes coordination, and it takes those people with all the money. But they have that aspiration and desire as well. And we have a tremendous resource in the mine. The mine was mothballed. It's not depleted, and it needs to be reclaimed. Not in the big, digging a big hole. I've already could have sold it for a multiple of what we have it under contract for a waste disposal spot. But who could do that at our headwater, you know? And it could be done, you know, for money. But I'm all about, everybody thinks I'm this big bad developer, but I'm all about reclaiming, and, you know, I've been here my whole life in Arkansas, so.
I like the idea of the big homes, but have you ever thought of also smaller homes?
No, this is obtainable.
Oh, okay.
You missed that word maybe.
Okay.
Not affordable, you know, the certain things where everybody, you know, not everybody can afford a $300,000 house, you know? There needs to be a variety in all that socioeconomic mixes together. It's called community, and you have different price points. But we just started, and I'm going to share it with the mayor and he's going to share it with you. We're excited about it, but it's a huge project, you know? Can you imagine fighting off a thousand acres and engineering the utility? But my last project was 300 acres, so it's not that big. It's manageable. But anyway, you guys have been gracious, and if I could do anything for you, you know, whether I win or lose, I'm still going to continue to be a champion for this county and this town, and so it's all good.
Good luck. Thank you.
It's all good. But thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'm going to just go ahead and slip out once you're in your meeting. And thanks for letting me take so long.
You bet.
Okay. I get winded. I do. Thanks again. Good evening. Double.
All right, so first, first business report tonight is planning commission. Walter.
Evening.
Good evening.
So not much happened. We missed our special meeting with Julia Erickson because of the weather. Beyond that, we've got the public hearing coming up to rezone 152 Centennial to maybe allow some townhomes going in. And so that, and then there's a lot split that we tabled, that that's part of it also. But that's coming up on the 17th here at 6 o'clock for the public hearing and then 6:30 for our planning commission, so.
So do keep that in mind, that public hearing will be prior to their meeting. So it'll be coming to us after that.
Hopefully, we can have your recommendation.
Yeah. Any questions for Walter? No?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Next is Tracy with our court report.
I don't have a real big report. I can tell you that I was surprised by the numbers this month. It says our disbursements were down about $10,000 from last month, and we are down about $6,000 from the same time last year so far. But when I did the year-to-year comparison, we were up about 100. And I'm going to blame that on the weather because we had time to issue more warrants to go through time phases and stuff. We got our computer, our new laptop set up, and we got our new scanners set up, our new copier. And during the bad weather and stuff, we were able to work from home, and we were able to get some stuff, not a ton, but we did get to start. Like, we have two, three, three copier boxes full of stuff that we got scanned so far. And that is the only thing that we did while we were off because it just takes a long time to get it all in there. But we're happy that we have the opportunity to be able to continue if there's more weather like this.
Friday.
Yeah, well, we got to go to Texas on Friday, so I'm hoping that we get there before there's anything that we're driving out of it or something.
Any questions for Tracy?
Okay.
Thank you, Tracy. Next is our library report. Blair.
Well, February was a really good month for us at the library, even despite the ice. We have a few events that we will begin holding once a month. Those are the tech help classes, the family event and the family night event and the magic passports program, which we've been doing monthly for a while now. Tech help is a drop-in hour on the second Wednesdays. There will be one session in the morning from 10:30 to 11:00, and again in the afternoon from 4:00 to 5:00. And this has been a really well-received program, so we're happy to continue doing it. And then we have family nights on the third Friday from 4:30 to 6:00. These will have fun literacy-inspired activities suitable for every age. So there will be board games, coloring, coloring pages, mini bowling, and more. Other events this month were the postal exhibit or postal history of Washington County presented by Tom Maringer of the Shire Postman. Mr. Maringer has also generously loaned his personal philately exhibit or his personal collection to us for exhibit, and it will be on display in the lobby for the next two months, and then we'll be coming down, so please come see it. It's really cool. We also have a fantasy-themed letter writing and envelope decorating class for teens coming up on the 23rd, a paper quilling class on the 25th. And lastly, we'll be hosting a children's storytime with Chad Dyke, who is the director of education at Theater Square in Fayetteville. That will be on Tuesday, March 29th. Any questions?
Busy down there, Blair.
Yes.
Any questions for Blair?
She wouldn't have time to answer.
Somebody wants to ask about stats for January. I, I'll hand these out if it's okay, and then.
Yeah, yeah. So you hand them out, and I'll talk to you.
Oh, yeah.
So can we do the 18th this month?
Yes.
Instead of this Friday, the next Friday?
Sure.
Okay. So we asked the mayor then, has anyone made it to any of Blair's classes yet? No. Number programming?
Have you?
I have not.
Don't put it all on us.
No, it's on you.
I have watched a couple of the books being read.
Wow, very good.
To the children.
We've had plans to go to the family night twice, and twice we haven't made it.
Yeah, y'all, please do come because, you know, the only way that we can continue having these programs is if you guys, you guys show up, bring your families and, and support us. So, so we hope you will show up. And, you know, if anything, you know, I've kind of rattled off some dates that I'm sure no one caught, but, you know, go to our website, go to our Facebook page. We also have an Instagram, and we post there constantly.
Thank you, Blair. Chief Nelson.
I don't have anything that exciting. We had 307 calls for service, 102 citations with 82 warnings, 51 warrants, and 11 arrests. Our CAD system, computer-aided dispatch, is now up and running. It's, we are now connected to the county and to several other small towns. So it's about what we've got going on right now.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. Collins, you paying to be that brief?
Yes, I said, all these people will need to be short.
Isaac.
Now here's public work.
I'm going to be short. I don't really have all that much. Our water loss continues to be fairly high, so we spent the better part of this, this month pounding the pavement looking for leaks. We found one today over here, and we've got five more to fix this week. Kind of a lull here while we're waiting on Nick to get us some plans for JD's sewer line replacement and sewer extension down there, so. Spring break, we're going to start over here at Friendship and knock it out, and then hopefully, if everything aligned is just right, we'll be able to move straight to JD's and do that one as well, so. We did some minor repairs or minor upgrades at our pump station there at the Al Hallow. They kind of put a mini-split in it so we can have it climate-controlled, mainly to get the moisture out of there so we can paint it. So when the health department comes down here, they don't slap me on the wrist for having paint get on off the ceiling, so. So that, and had some lights put in at the water plant over here so we can see. But, but that's really about it. And snow every other week, and so I guess we're prepared for more. So that's about all I got.
Any questions for us?
I'll let Nick hammer out that change order stuff for you. He, him and I talk about stored materials like every day, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Parks director.
I'm probably going to have to tell y'all what I've been doing. Getting ready for baseball and softball and springing the park and all that, so. And the snow and ice has not been behind us either. Our signups and stuff got pushed. We finally got that through. I've been working on finalizing teams. Still working on it, so not in a very good mood, so just a warning. We, our numbers are up. They're not quite back where we were before pre-COVID, but they are up. We've got 247 participants this year with 22 teams, which is up about 30 from where we were last year, the first year coming out of COVID. So we're still probably 20 or so where we were averaging, probably 15 to 20 where we were averaging before COVID, so. But it's coming back, and, and that's a good sign. Fields are in good shape, especially the two high school fields. We started on them, getting them prepared first because high school has already played some games down there, and they played tomorrow night as well. The, the new field has really done excellent so far, what we expected it to, to do. And so we're happy there. Got some work due on the other two, but we're getting there. As far as facilities, they're in pretty good shape. We did get our heating and cooling mini-split unit installed. We got new bathroom ceilings to help that. It'll make, it's already made it so much nicer down there to be able to heat, cool it, and it'll just make everything more efficient as well as, as far as, and, and more comfortable also, but. So we got that done, and let's see, what else? That's really just getting ready for that. That's where we're at. I have a whole lot. That's what I've got.
So talk to us a little bit. You had a parks meeting, and you discussed the outdoor stage.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, most of the information is in there, but we are working on, we have a couple of different parks committee members working on different things. Funding, whether that be grants to help with stage or private donors as well. There's one big possible donor that they're reaching out to as well. And Susan's going to work on helping me with putting together some ideas and some designs and stuff. We were hoping to have that ready by our 4th of July event. Probably not going to happen. But we do still plan on having that done in this calendar year. We have a budget and a plan to do that in this calendar year. Excited about that. It's just come along slower than, than I'd hoped.
And I saw that if we don't have it done by then, that we'll just, maybe just host a groundbreaking.
Yeah, we, we're worked, we tied our Paul Miller Field dedication in last year with our 4th of July event. Worked really well. So, yeah, we talked about that as an idea for, if we got our plans and we're ready, we could at least do some kind of groundbreaking ceremony on it during our 4th of July event, definitely. I think I told y'all last month, we are planning on a full event this year during our 4th of July.
Good one, Marty.
Well, I was excited also to read about the Mildred ARP.
Yes, and that plaque actually came in today. I just had it went and picked up. He emailed me late this afternoon and said it was ready, so I'm excited about that.
Yeah, she's a good lady.
And so if I have to step out and take this, I'm still trying to iron out a couple of coaches, and that's one of them, so, but I'll call back in a minute.
So.
But, yeah, we will have.
A stain on there. Are they kin, Deanna, is she kin to you?
Who's that?
It's, who, how is that, like, great aunt or grandmother or? Yeah, so she, well, it's kind of complicated.
I'll let you explain that.
Um, just kind of, sort of an adopted sibling to Jim and Henry. Okay. That's the simplest way to.
Cool.
I just always remembered her as Tu's and Dolly's daughter, even though she really wasn't.
Right, exactly.
Quite a, quite a ball player from what I understand, too.
It's pretty unique and interesting. That's why we wanted to put it down there and honor her as well and things like that, so. That's awesome. We, that was something that kind of came up around the COVID time, too, and got pushed through, but we.
And is she still?
Finally got it all just ready to go, so.
No?
Has anyone on the council, has anyone on the council played the Frisbee Golf Course? Yeah, a couple?
Just, just a hole or two.
Just a hole or two? So that thing is getting a ton of use. I don't know if anybody's made it out to the park and walked the trail yet. There is, there's, it's constant traffic coming to the Frisbee Golf Course, yeah.
Trails, trails picking up.
Don't go with Chad, don't we, gee.
All right, anything else for Chad? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Fire department, Chief Myers.
Not a lot. It's hard to tell, but up by the bridge, all this is our new firewise signs for the firewise community. It helps us to be considered for a lot of grants. We need to be firewise. I think we're only one of two fire departments in the county. Um, I think we're only one of two fire departments in the county that have the firewise, uh, community, so. Um, told you last month, we had one of our firefighters die, in lieu of flowers, they, the family asked if people make donations to the fire department, we've collected eleven hundred and fifty dollars so far for that, so that's been awesome. Um, I know it's like a broke record on our air packs, but it's really, uh, something I'm very excited about. I had to go to a meeting a week or so ago, two weeks ago, uh, didn't realize how bad ours were until I saw the new ones, and they are just, they're state-of-the-art. We put in an order for twenty, we're only gonna get nineteen because of price increases, but also went anticipating, that's spent a lot of money on extra bottles, that's actually gonna be included, so we're gonna get nineteen air packs, nineteen extra bottles, and the face mask. So really, our cost is gonna be very, very, very minimal, so I'm really excited about that. But hopefully they'll get those ordered pretty quick and get them out sometime in the next, every month, so. And that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Excuse me. Chief Myers been under the weather a little bit here lately.
Oh, yeah.
But he looks like he's coming back soon.
I'm not contagious, so I'm good.
Finance report, Kristy.
You may get a bottle of water.
And so our bank balance has increased by thirty-one thousand, uh, this month, and all of our departments are under budget since February, so that's a good thing. We have to have a talk if we weren't. And it looks like our sales tax for the city increased, uh, still at this time over last year by seven percent. Uh, county went down a tiny bit, but overall, we're still up four percent. Not a lot of information in the finances right now, because it's so early in the year. Um, we do have, um, some things going on in our building, we have, um, upgraded or changed our accounting system to a cloud-based system, um, which is a positive thing, uh, for a lot of reasons, but the main reason is for disaster recovery purposes. If for some reason we were told that our computer systems had a fire, tornado, whatever, anyway, lose that, then we can basically go to any computer, um, and be able to just have our accounting process to be able to still be payroll, whatever needs to be done, so, um, that's something that's, has just been offered in the last six months with the program that we use, so, uh, I'm glad to get on that and be able to have that as a backup for us. We are also, um, in the process of implementing a employee portal so that all of our, um, pay stubs, people can get on a, a website, and they'll be able to get their pay stubs. That way they can go in and change their address, they can change their tax deductions, all that, they'll be able to, um, access all of that by themselves, um, and they'll also have a, a time clock thing, which will be nice, because right now we're still doing paper handwritten timesheets. Um, so we'll actually be able to have a time clock system that will import directly into the accounting system, so. Hopefully within the next month or two, when I finally figure all of that out, we'll, we'll have that, um, all implemented. And, and the other new thing we have going on right now, we do have a new server for the city on orders, that was part of our budget, so it's already been paid for, um, they, they're evidently really hard to get right now, as well as everything else, so we're hoping by the end of March to have that and actually have it in place, um, maybe in April, before we actually give it, so. Any questions?
Got questions for Kristy? Okay, thanks, Kristy. All right, so we don't have any old business, we took care of all of it last month, uh, so we'll jump into new business, and we'll start with ordinance five zero five, it's a ward redistricting ordinance. So we had this put together, uh, from Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. Um, it, it is in response to, uh, census growth, census data, and so regional planning went through, um, all of our areas, as, uh, Kendra was saying earlier, uh, due to that, they're creating a new, uh, representative ward, uh, in Northwest Arkansas. Uh, so, anyway, say all that to say, regional planning put together an ordinance for us, redrew our districts to, um, to get our, our population, um, sizes relatively the same across all four wards. So, do we have any questions on that? No? Do I need to read this?
No, you hear a motion to suspend the rule.
I make a motion and suspend, suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Uh, for ordinance five oh five?
We have a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance five zero five, we have a second for that. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deana McKnight? Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condiv?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
So here it's an ordinance redistricting city wards, and you would take a motion to pass?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance five oh five?
I'll say it.
A motion and second to pass ordinance five zero five. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deana McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condiv?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you have a question? Is the Bank of Fayetteville still the Bank of Fayetteville right now?
Yes, it is.
For our existing places?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
All right, so that motion has passed.
Yes.
Or that ordinance has passed. Uh, item number two, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two, extend the Orion Waste Solutions contract for another five years, that is, the contract is in your packet. Uh, when we originally switched to Orion from Trashaway, that was a five-year contract. That contract had two, uh, extensions in it, if we so chose to, uh, accept those. And so the contract is, is, uh, terminating, it's coming to an end, the first five years in June.
I know.
Do what?
I said, that's our belief, it's been five years.
I know, yeah, yeah, it was quite a fight in here tonight that, uh, we went to Orion.
Yes, it was.
So, um, do we have any thoughts, concerns about extending that contract?
No.
No, I make a motion, we pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh two?
I second.
We have a motion and second to extend that contract for five more years, all those in favor say yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion, or that resolution passes. Uh, moving on to item three, authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Denali Water Solutions for biosolids removals at the sewer plant. That contract amount is four hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and five dollars. That is more than what we had hoped that contract would come out to be. Uh, we opened bids, has that been two weeks ago, Nick?
Uh, it was February seventeenth, so we opened about three weeks ago.
Uh, so we opened bids about three weeks ago, um, and this is our bid for, I say our bid, this is our only bid for that. Uh, so we are under a bit of a time crunch to get that taken care of, needs to be done by the end of this year. Uh, we fired the last contractor that was on that, uh, contract, and so we would, uh, like to go ahead and authorize this contract with Denali so that they can get started.
I make a motion that we approve the mayor to, um, go into a contract.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and second on that, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no, that motion carries. New business, item number four is a change order with Boyle's Construction to reduce the contract by two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Nick, would you explain just kind of what we're doing there?
Yeah.
Come on, man. So basically, um, this change order is, it's a one called a final reconciliation of quantities. So Boyle says pretty much finished all work out there that they can get paid for, we still have some lingering items to, to resolve with them on some items, and we wish to hold the retainage back, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we've settled in on how much we're gonna pay them for all these hundreds of quantities and pay items that we've done over the course of several years, so, um, um, part of doing that, too, is we need to free up some money, we need to get some money back into the pot to help pay for the, the biosolids removal for, for Denali, so, um, we went through this, got the contractor to agree that we're not gonna pay them any more than these quantities on all these items, um. A lot of it came out of the White River, you know, from the, the prior contractor, there's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars coming back from there, and then, um, the sewer rehab work that we've been working on since last year, um, we're going to run that about forty thousand dollars under, so that's, that's where that two hundred and thirty-three thousand came up, how we came up with that, so, basically, that's, like I said, it's mainly to, to, to get the contract close to finalization, free up some money so we can keep moving forward with the, the closure activities. Um, I will say, um, as I mentioned, the stored materials, we still have some issues to resolve with the contractor. They, they have several, several items that they're saying that the supplier won't take back, I think some of it is, you know, we'll, we'll see, but, you know, they, they bought it three years ago, with COVID and everything, you know, they're saying, well, we don't need that stuff, or it's an odd size, we put in a ten-inch board, or ten inches isn't a common size, so it's, it's hard to find takers for it, but, um, we're still working through that with the contractor, we, we gave them an offer, um, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we've been trying to work through that, and we couldn't get to terms for this meeting, so I told Randy Boyle that we are going to resolve it here before the next meeting. Um, so we're, Isaac and I and Randy Boyle's are working hard on that to, to come to something that's fair for, for everybody, so. Um, the main thing is I don't think the city should, um, end up with, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars' worth of materials that we can't do anything with. There's some items that Isaac's agreed to take on that I think are reasonable, and we've got to figure out what to do with the rest, so. Um, y'all, any questions on the change order?
Do we have a motion on the change order?
I make it, let me approve it. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank y'all.
So we have a motion and second to approve this change order and reduce our contract with Boyle's Construction by two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no, that motion carries. Uh, next is item D, other business. Uh, we have one item in other business that are, that is listed, uh, and it's just a reminder that the Planning Commission public hearing is March seventeenth at six o'clock. Uh, we'll be discussing a rezone from commercial to multifamily, uh, as well as a variance on the property. Uh, this is, uh, I think we talked about this last, uh, meeting, uh, it's for a set of townhouses. They're on the old, uh, well, part of it's on the property that we sold, uh, but they're around the Matthews, uh, feed store property. So I would encourage everyone to, to come to that, uh, public hearing so that we're aware of any public concerns before it comes to the, uh, the council at large. Uh, with that, uh, does anyone else have any other business they would like to bring in? No? Okay. So next, mayor's comments. So I would like to, uh, I would like to announce a change, I would like council's blessing in the change. But the city, uh, the city's talked about this before, and, uh, we, we've struggled trying to deal with the situation at, uh, city admin. We, we, like many other cities our size, we struggle, uh, because we have few employees in, in certain positions. And so as you guys know, every, uh, year, our auditor writes us up because we have few employees in, in sensitive positions. Well, the other problem that we've had, and we've discussed it before, is, uh, our city staff, uh, particularly in our administration building, is not getting a lunch break, they're working straight through. And we have, uh, as a body, we've said, well, you guys need to alternate who is taking a lunch and who is, uh, working. And that's a great theory, except it only works about twenty percent of the time, and the other eighty percent of the time, they're both working through their lunch. Uh, so, we have looked around at other cities, uh, West Fork is one of the only small cities. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, Fayetteville and Johnson are the only two cities that are open until five o'clock every day. Uh, the rest of them are eight to four thirty, uh, they're trying to solve the same problem we are. So, uh, I recommended that we need to change these hours from eight to four thirty, allow that city staff, uh, admin staff a lunch, uh, so that we're doing things right, we're not, we're not having people work through their lunch break, uh, at the administration. Uh, we have, uh, we've looked at a couple of different options on it, we've looked at how many people are using the city admin between four thirty and five, um, and it's very few, that's, uh, the slowest time at the city administration building, is between four thirty and five. Uh, it's used more in the morning, uh, than it is in the afternoon. So, uh, I'm asking for your blessing in this change, uh, with our admin hours.
Sounds like it's solving a problem?
It's solving a problem, it is putting us on, uh, a schedule that most other cities are already on. Um, I think Farmington John, if I'm not mistaken.
We close at four on Fridays.
Yeah.
Four thirty Monday through Thursday, and we close at four on Fridays.
So, we're really the oddball out, and like I said, we're doing it, uh, I mentioned last meeting that our employees are constantly going above and beyond, and, and this is a discussion that we've had on multiple occasions, and they're making do, but it, in reality, they should be, uh, paying themselves overtime, uh, so. This fixes the problem, this puts us in line with, with where most of the other towns are, uh, and so this is my recommendation. Are we okay with that?
I don't care either way, whatever works best.
Okay.
For them.
Okay. All right, Kristy, you can make that change. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion to...
Hey, I'll make that motion.
Motion and second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, that motion carries.